The Kerrville City Council is now in session. And we will have our invocation by Councilman Cochran and the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Join with me. Father God, we're here tonight to conduct the city of business. And we just ask that your special blessing be over this group. Please let us all remember that we're working toward a common goal, and that's to make this city the most wonderful and blessed place that we can. Give us wisdom, give us patience, give us compassion, and in all things, let us make our decisions based on what we believe you would like us to do. We ask this in your name, Father. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and go.
Go ahead.
All right. Welcome, everybody, tonight. Just got a couple of events we've got coming up that I wanted to talk about. This Friday night, we have, this is going to be the fourth of five events, the concerts by the River events this year. And we have the Mike Casper Quartet. They will be at Louise Hayes Park Friday night at seven o'clock. Jazz and Blues, I've heard them before, and they're terrific. So I encourage everybody to come out, bring your lawn chairs, and enjoy a Friday night out. And this is another event by our Parks and Recreation Department, as is our next one. I'm saying that every week, so I'm going to ask Ashley to stand up. Just give her a hand for all the hard work. They do a terrific job over there. And this event coming up on September the 7th, this is the first event that we've done like this. It is the Kerrville River Festival. We hope to do many more, but this is also in celebration of the city's 130th birthday. So we invite everybody to come out Saturday, September 7th. I think the concert begins at 3:15 in the afternoon. We have one, two, three, four acts up there, headlined by Bart Crowe at eight o'clock. And we've had quite a bit of enthusiastic response to this on our Facebook pages. And so I encourage you all to come out and take part in it. Things will be a lot of fun. Thanks.
It's free.
And it is free, yes.
Another announcement of community interest. Okay? This time, our visitors, citizens forum, you may speak, but not on an item on the agenda, and limited to four minutes. Okay, do we have some people?
We have three citizen speakers, George Burdi.
Okay.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road, Calaville, Kerr. I'm trying to read this really fast, trying to get your three-minute deal in. So it's just basically a 100-day assessment of council. Start off with the cuss to both of the new council members for daring to ask questions, and in particular, Mr. Cochran, for raising issues regarding perspective of the average citizen. Whether he has full grasp of the everyday Kerrville resident is unclear, but at least he's asking for consideration, and I appreciate that. Furthermore, I can appreciate Mr. Cochran's lone perspective, because I voiced the exact same one to no avail of pointing out the CO debt being issued for streets. It's pointless and wasteful if the current maintenance budget allows us to continue to fall behind each subsequent year. The tagline for the current proposed budget is "creating a year of momentum." And while this is a catchy phrase, unfortunately, a lot of the momentum seems to be in the direction away from accountability and transparency towards the general public. I missed the 4:00 p.m. council meeting today, but I presume you passed changes to your procedural rules and had been advised about House Bill 2840 that was supposedly requiring you to allow citizens to speak on every agenda item at all council meetings. It is unfortunate that it took state law to force the city to do the right thing and abide by its own charter. Currently, our charter states in Article 3, Section 301, "All meetings of the council shall be open to the public, and the rules of the council shall provide that the citizens of the city shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard at any such meetings in any matter considered." This would, of course, include workshops and special meetings, as referenced in the charter. Yet the mayor, with silent approval from the city attorney and city manager, has been ruling that citizens would not be able to speak at workshops. That brings us to another recent trend that is contrary to the codes of ordinances and most definitely in opposition to more transparent government. Article 2, Section 231, kind of meeting states, "City council holds its regular meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, beginning at 6:00 p.m. The council may, by majority vote at a regular meeting, change the days or times of meetings as circumstances may necessitate." Yet today marks the fourth consecutive council meeting that has actually begun at 4:00 p.m. Yes, it is being posted as a separate workshop, but we hear that the policy has been changed to make this 4:00 p.m. workshop a regular council meeting day event. Even if it were not against ordinance to do so, one of the consequences, intended or not, is to make it more difficult for the public to follow and engage in regular business due to the early start time. Also, by labeling these meetings as workshops, the practice had been hoping to exclude public input from proceedings, but of course, we now realize this is contrary to the charter. One thing many of you have faulted me on in particular for is the idea of council making a decision just moving on. This advice seems a bit hypocritical, considering recent council action. Council made a decision about eminent domain in the River Trail in February or March, I can't recall, yet you all voted to reverse that decision last month, and you just changed, I assume, I didn't, like I said, go, changed your procedural rules in a couple of cases, reversing decisions made just last September. One such rule change has been requested by the city manager not once, but twice, only to be refused in September, and then again in January. Lastly, we cannot ignore the overuse, some might say abuse, of the consent agenda, which has grown over these past 100 days. Your only procedural rules, as well as common sense, dictates that the consent agenda is for routine items. Yet ordinance readings, million-dollar contract awards, and presentations regarding the controversial development services updates have recently appeared on the consent agenda. You'll notice that all the decisions I have referenced reflect decisions not made by council, but basically by staff, including your procedural rules, changes that were oddly suggested, not by council, but by the city manager at the workshop last week, which I presume is why the mayor asked the question last week, whose rules are these? This body is the one accountable to the public, so I'm respectfully asking that you all be more diligent in guarding the right of the people to have access to its own business. Thanks.
Richard Ferris.
Richard Ferris, 416 Main Street, Kerrville. Upcoming project with HEB, I hope you all will consider drainage. It's a major problem in the 400 block of Highway 27, Main Street Junction Highway, whatever you want to call it. It floods, it is dangerous. You cannot walk on the west side, pardon, the north side of the sidewalk without getting drenched by a car if your timing is wrong. On the south side, pronto insurance and the Tracy's business, the water goes under the doors of those buildings when the water splashes. There is no storm drainage whatsoever in that area, and it needs to be addressed. And while this major undertaking for HEB is going on, it seems to me that would be very appropriate time to do it.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Sure, it's actually part of the project. I'm not sure the extent of it, but it should handle the majority of the issue. That was part of the requirement in exchange for the right-of-way or the Hay Street closing.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Well, it is a part of the contract to HEB, there is significant drainage work that's going to be done. So I hope, Richard, that that will take care of that problem.
I've been through this rodeo out on Junction Highway between the state and the city, and the buck passing was just unbelievable. So maybe we can get a head start on it this time.
Good, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Susan Doninger.
I'm glad to hear, I'm just wondering about meeting at 4:00 to do your policy. Yike, okay. I noticed you're going to be needing affordable housing for all the new people coming in for the hospital, perhaps, and I saw that they were looking at cutting down lots to 3,300 square feet, and I Googled it and said 3,500 is average. Just wondering if you're hoping to find someone who'll provide affordable housing, construction here, and hoping you'll look beyond the usual Kerrvilleians. It's not been up to their speed, it would seem, but we really do need that housing. The other thing is the drainage he was just talking about. I have heard people coming up here from the middle school talking about how that project, drainage, has been a problem, and that really needs to be one, an issue that seems to be a problem for all of your projects. And I just hope you really take care. I just think of our affluent pond and what's happened there, and we just really need care in our construction around here. Thank you.
Can I ask for some clarification? Now, in the zoning code, I believe that the developments, that the developers now have to include that in their plans for future developments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Drainage, drainage issues?
So that was something that we did address through the code?
With the code rewrite, yes. And of course, tonight, you have on your agenda the COs, which will address the priority drainage issues.
Well, I was just thinking, there's just been extra added costs for that middle school for some things that haven't been considered in advance, like a $400, $4 million, and we paid $200, $2 million of it, or something like that. And part of it is this roadway and drainage, and I'm just asking, please, be careful about this. It's also my understanding that there's a reason why we should maybe put the charter review, have a special election for that, and I'm not understanding what the reason is for that, why that couldn't just go on the May ballot? Is there a reason why that can't just go on the May ballot, the charter review amendments?
We don't respond to speakers in this session.
Okay, okay. Because it could be voted on in May, and that's an extra $5,600 to put that on, and thank you very much.
All right, we have a couple of presentations to make.
First is Hill Country CASA.
In the course of this proclamation, you will learn more about what Hill Country CASA does. And CASA is a national organization. Let me share this proclamation with you. Whereas in 1977, Seattle Court Judge David Sokup conceived the idea of CASA, court-appointed special advocates, as he was presiding over child protection cases. He realized the weighty responsibility of the decisions he was making for children and felt he needed an unbiased, unrelated person to make independent investigation into cases and report recommendations in a child's best interest. Sokup's idea grew into a nationwide movement. And whereas Hill Country CASA was established in 1989 to provide trained community volunteers to serve child residents of Vandera, Galaspe, Kendall, and Kerr Counties in state custody due to abuse or neglecting their home, and the courts making decisions about their permanence and... Whereas today, CASA volunteers work under guardian ad litem appointment to assure every child receives individual attention, necessary services, and timely placement in a safe, loving, and permanent home. And whereas the Hill Country CASA staff work to provide a CASA guardian ad litem volunteer for every child or sibling group that comes before the courts due to abuse or neglect in the service area, provide supportive knowledgeable case supervision that develops volunteers into strong advocates currently, urgently pursuing permanence for children, provide high-quality volunteer training that addresses issues facing our children and families, and provide steps to resolution, collaborate with community partners, stakeholders, and service agencies to promote healing and healthy future development, raise awareness about the issue of child abuse, and to invite citizen involvement in solving this community problem, advocate for services for Texas foster children as appropriate at local, regional, state, and national levels, reunify children with their natural parents whenever possible. And whereas Hill Country CASA has been able to provide an advocate for every child in the four county area for the last 19 years, now therefore, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, you hereby proclaim 2019 as Hill Country CASA 30th anniversary. I want you in just a minute to introduce yourselves and tell your connection to CASA. But a personal word, my wife has been a CASA volunteer for a long time, and recently, I was able to go to court with her to see a successful resolution where two little kids were finally provided a really good, safe home, and it was an exciting day indeed. Okay, name and your relationship.
My name's Stephanie Cash, I'm the Executive Director of Hill Country CASA.
And I'm Goldie Robson, I'm the Program Director of Hill Country CASA.
They do great work, really do.
Thank you.
Yeah, picture time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
I have to say, I almost felt, I did fill out an application to be a CASA volunteer years ago, and then I realized the responsibility, it's huge. I wasn't quite up for it at that moment, but anyway, I have a great respect.
It is huge, but incredibly important. I would like the folks who are involved in our committee's senior services to come up here, if you would. This is a committee of the city formed in the last year to look at senior services, what is being provided in the community, what is needed, and the interaction of the city to, there you go, Chairman, and then the interaction of the city and senior adults. Whereas Healthy Aging Month is an annual health observance month to focus national attention on the positive aspects of growing older and to provide inspiration for adults aged 50 and above to improve their physical, mental, social, and financial well-being. And whereas, physical health is a number-one priority, it is recommended to schedule health screenings and consider more physical exercise and a balanced diet. And whereas, strengthening mental wellness by reading, learning new skills, and developing hobbies. And whereas, maintaining social circles, such as volunteering, and staying in contact with family and friends. And whereas, staying financially aware, keep a budget and watch for deals and discounts. And whereas, during National Healthy Aging Month, we reassert our commitment to inspire a positive, healthy lifestyle. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim September as Healthy Aging Month in Kerrville, and encourage all our citizens to pursue a positive, healthy lifestyle. I want you to just quickly introduce yourselves, but reading this, I'm reminded that this is for persons aged 50 and above, and I'm 23 years beyond that, so I may have some catching up to do. Catching up, okay. And your role?
I'm Rebecca Beazer, I'm the Chair.
Waverly Jones, Co-Chair.
Margie Jatton.
Christine Kleemo, Member.
Karen Burkett.
Carl Mager.
All right.
Can I make one announcement?
Yeah, but let me say this, Karen, in her eyes of Mike, has been involved in starting Kerr Connect Transportation Services in the community, which is really good. Okay.
We're going to have our Health Fair on September 11th at the Deeter Center in conjunction with the Flu Shots, we'd love attendance.
Flu Shots, September 11th, and Health Fair at the Deeter Center. Okay, good.
But I want to know where the guys are.
I was wondering that.
Are they not aging or something? They don't think they need this?
I don't know how those guys are.
We've got one, two, and three.
Thank you very much.
We now come to the consent agenda, and that is, we will vote on that together unless a council member or a citizen asks for an item to be pulled.
I have four items to be pulled.
Okay.
4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G.
4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G.
Yes.
All right, okay. Okay, let's vote on the remainder of items.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the items in the consent agenda, 4A, 4B, and 4C. 4H, 4I, and 4J.
Okay. The motion is approval of the remainder items.
But 4B was one that she wanted pulled, isn't it?
I thought it was 4D.
4D as in David.
4D.
4E as in Edward. 4F as in Frank. 4G as in George.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion for the remaining items? Do we have a second? Can you second it? All right, all in favor of the remaining items, leave it known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Okay, who will speak to 4D?
Peggy McKay, 103 West Chester, Kerrville. Regarding the election, when I understood the early plan, it was to have a bond election that would be included, or would be on the November ballot, and the revisions to the charter would be included. As plans changed, it seems the bond became a certificate of obligation, which does not require voter approval. As it stands today, the charter revisions will be the only items on the November ballot. After looking at the agreement with the county as to who will be conducting the election, the joint, I guess, I was not able to determine the cost, but the first number I heard was $10,000, and now it's all over the board, so I have no idea what it is. But whatever it is, it is only for charter revisions. And I don't see anything in our charter revisions that would demand immediate attention for a special election for a pretty high price that could not be addressed in the regular city election. And rescheduling this to be included at the May election would be a bonus in that it would give those people seeking a seat on city council to discuss the revisions with the voters, who would then have a better and would be better informed on the changes and how the revisions would affect any city operations. I'm requesting that the November election be canceled and the charter revisions be included on the May election. And as a footnote, in Section 2 of the agreement that outlined the procedures for candidate replacement on the ballot, as I understood or read quickly through this agreement, it covered only the November election, not a May election where we would have candidates. And I didn't understand why that was included. But at any rate, I'm requesting that we put this on the May ballot where we already have a scheduled election. Thank you.
Anything else on 4D?
Bill Morgan.
I'll pass, she covers the issue that I was wanting to...
Okay, all right.
Susan Doninger.
Can I interrupt for just a minute? It seems like there's some background noise. Is it the door being open back there? I hear like something in that room or something. Thank you very much. My hearing's just too good.
I think I dressed it out of order, so I really put being eliminated also, and that's it.
All right. Is that it?
That is all the speakers.
Okay. Do we have a motion in regard to the joint election agreement?
I'll make a motion that we pass 4D and the consent agenda regarding the joint election agreement.
I'll second that.
And the motion is second? Any discussion?
For clarification, the amount that we'll be spending on the election?
I believe it's 5,600.
5,600, just to make it clear to everyone.
The reason why it's not as high as we thought, because there are going to be state items on the ballot, so it's not just us, it's also other items, and so we're splitting costs.
Splitting costs with the county?
I, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, all in favor of 4D, if you'll let me know by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. 4E?
4E, Susan Doninger.
I really get concerned about our $62 million debt, it's going to maybe be $75 coming up for our little city, and you're planning on $6 million, perhaps, for an entire Olympic pool complex out there, and I'm just wondering what the justification is for spending $163,000 for resurfacing the pool, if you're going to be getting rid of it and putting in a big complex? That's my question.
Basically, we're looking at a whole plan for a aquatic center, which has not been finalized, but this is a matter of just resurfacing that pool while it is down so that we've got it, it can be continually used. And nobody knows how much of that total plan is going to be adopted.
Well, you've moved ahead on all the other plans very quickly, and it just seems to me that if it's within the next couple of years, that I'd look very carefully at the $163,000, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And can I ask someone on staff, just because I know or that I've heard that this is not a issue that has to deal with something fun, additional, or change, but this is a, this is a basic need in this pool.
This is an infrastructure thing?
Correct.
Okay, I would love to see some money go to Carver Park for umbrellas. I took pictures of the Carver Park place with no umbrellas over their water or over their park things, and they can't, I can't use it on hot days.
You'd be pleased to know that that's part of the plan, you'd be pleased to know that that's part of the plan that will be coming through.
I hope so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, 4E, on resurfacing the Olympic pool, do we have a motion?
We approve item 4E, it's presented.
Okay, do we have a second? We've got a second. All in favor, leave it known by the raised hands, all right. 4F, Quaterlippi River Utility Crossing Project?
We have one speaker, Bonnie White.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Bonnie White, 402 Forest Ridge, and I don't have necessarily any problem with the project itself, I know it's something that needs to be done. I did have a question about clarification, and I don't know if you can do it or if you'd like to pass it along, but I was involved in this, you know, from the get-go, so my question refers to the first page in the scope of work. I was not able to go back to the original contract, you know, that was given for this project, but I do recall that there were, I believe, three lines that were put in that distribution corridor there, and the first page says of the scope of work, it's called, number one, the potable water and reclaimed water distribution. Originally, it was just for the redistribution lines, and then the 12-inch potable water line was added by staff, and it was supposed to be for a future project, but it got added in. So that's just a freebie note, but it does say they will add two 12-inch water lines. I specifically remember one. And one 12-inch... I specifically remember one, and one 12-inch reclaimed water line. And I thought I remember in this original exhibit that we were doing eight or 10-inch lines for the distribution lines. So is that a typo in that we are not certainly doing two potable water lines? Am I correct?
I'm gonna ask staff to clarify that.
So in the original design contract, which was May of 2016, the design for the utility crossing at 534 actually included three lines. One was a potable water line, one was a reused distribution line, and one was a line to be determined at a later date. It didn't have a specific purpose necessarily, but it was while the work was being done, it was seen as beneficial for having that line, go ahead and put it across there, whether that would have a future sewer use, or future reuse distribution use, or future potable use. And so in looking at this and crossing through there, this is what has been proposed for those utility crossings at this time going over that 534 bridge.
So the answer is no, it was not in the original scope of work. It was one 12-inch water line. I remember that from the capital improvement projects, and the others were reclaimed. So that's just something I pointed out. You answered the question. I remember that the price was increased by about a million and a half for that particular section, and the answer was that it was gonna be a million and a half to upgrade the Comanche line and then to do this 12-inch water line. So I'm not real sure where the two, where the second potable water line came into play. That was my remark. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on four F, the Guadalupe River Utility Crossing Project, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, accept it as it is presented.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, if you'd let me know by the raised hands, okay, and it passes. Now, four G, the monthly community improvement.
We have one speaker, Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, 103 West Chester. First request, could we make this a little larger? It's hard to read for me without a magnifying glass, so I brought it with me just in case. There's a bunch of items on here. Number four, the Shell Hayes property. This is the first time that I've seen a memo of understanding with a tenant has been executed. And I don't recall hearing a specific plan for the property. I don't remember too much detailed discussion. And from this wording, it would appear that multiple tenants are being sought. Does this put the city in position of being a lessor? And is there an outline of the type of businesses or lesses that are being courted? And will their rent cover the cost of upkeep, or will the taxpayer be called upon to make up a difference? So in other words, it's going to be self-supporting project or not? And then the aquatic center, again, which you kind of went over a little bit. But the stakeholders, as I recall, would be KISD and Shriners. And they have major competitions, which I understand why they would have a need or want for this type of facility. But I don't see that the city should be the major project leader in this. And both the city, or the KISD and Shriners have property where they could make their own competitive swimming pool. There was a young student from O L H last year who was a number one swimmer in the state. And she trained at the Wellness Center in Fredericksburg, which is only a 36-foot-long pool. So I don't mind a competitive swimming pool, but I would like to see KISD or Shriners be the designers and the owners of this pool and let the city be the stakeholder. I'd like to reverse that. And then the Hotel Conference Center, plans for a private-public arrangement. After a little bit of checking, it appears to me that there's not a convention center in the state that operates in the block. And if there is, I hope that their successes will be included in the detail that's forthcoming. And then a boating center. I thought I was pretty much up to date on things, but I've not heard a thing about a boating center, and yet a contract's been executed for the feasibility. Doesn't mean it, construction, but feasibility. And it says additional stakeholders' meetings have occurred. I hadn't heard about this project, and I thought I was pretty up to date on the projects in the city. And I would like to ask if there's some way that the items on this CIP list every month or whenever it comes out, if there could be some type of discussion about them so we know what's going on before all of a sudden there they are. Thank you.
Okay. Four G, the Improvement Project, CIP, do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the monthly community improvement project as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Discussion.
Okay, you got a discussion?
I really don't mind having, for the benefit of the public, having this taken off consent agenda and having a presentation in the future. And I'm not sure, other than comment, what I need to do at this point. Just, I guess it's just a... Am I, am I appropriate in saying that right now?
Okay, the issue would be taking this, the project list, off the CIP.
For a brief update when it's on there.
And come back later.
Is that something that, I don't know what to do with that comment.
So what would be the alternative?
Just, it's in the consent agenda right now, but we used to have, you know, an update without, without it being on consent agenda, if I remember correctly, to have a staff update.
You need...
Do we need to vote on that, or just wait and see?
The reason why is because the council's asked for routine items or items that have been heard before on multiple occasions just to put those on the consent, and so that's why that's on there. But there's no problem at all in moving it in the future to your regular agenda if that's what the council wants.
All right, okay. All right, then the issue is, do we, do we move it to, I mean, do we include it in future agenda? Or do we remove this tonight?
Well, we need to vote on this to accept it first, don't we?
It's already polled by citizens. So it can be discussed now, anything on there, but going forward, you just tell me you want it on the regular agenda, it'll happen.
Okay, all right. So what do we want to do? Leave it and have it on the agenda next time?
I don't mind it being a separate item. I will say, though, Ms. McKay, I believe we did, there had been some discussion about the boating project you're referring to. I don't recall the exact date, but a lot of these things, they have had at least one discussion, and it's possible maybe you missed that one, I don't know, but I can go back and look and see for sure.
And that's also privately funded for the study right now. It's not being, city dollars aren't being spent at this point. That's, that's a privately funded study.
Okay. Can't we vote on, on accepting it for tonight, and then we ask them to?
Yes, I wouldn't suggest doing that tonight because I know staff hasn't had time to prepare remarks on that.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we are, we're passing four G with the understanding that in the future, the project list will be a part of the agenda with some explanation. All right, all, everybody, and do we have a second to that?
I think we had a second.
Yeah, you voted, Mayor.
No.
They didn't vote? They have a motion and a second.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, that is the end of the consent agenda. And at 6:40, we go into the public hearing, and you wanna read that in, Ms. McElhan? [inaudible]
Public hearing on the City of Curville fiscal year 2020 proposed budget.
All right. Okay, Mrs. Dozier.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few slides to present to you before we open it up to public comment. So I'm here to talk to you once again about the fiscal year 2020 budget, just to recap our journey so far. So staff began preparing this budget in February. In June, we started officially presenting ideas to council. We've held three workshops, presented 94 slides. We spent approximately five hours talking to you as a group and to the public. In addition, you all have this 344-page budget book. And you've asked many individual questions. I appreciate that. I know everyone's been reading it. Looking at the calendar, you can kind of see how we're progressing along here. So we've held our budget workshops, we've received our certified tax roll from CERCAD, we've done our state-required effective tax rate calculation. On July 31st, we actually, we filed the proposed budget book with the city secretary. It was also put at the library for public viewing, and it was also put on the website at that time. On August 13th, we had another budget presentation, and then council voted for a tax rate resolution to lower the property tax rate from 55.14 cents to 54 cents. Also, on that day, council authorized the publication of public notices on both the budget and the tax rate. Those notices appeared in the Curville Daily Times on August 16th. They were published on our website, and they're currently being advertised five times per day on the public access channel. So that brings us to August 27th, and we actually have two public hearings, and they'll be conducted separately. So the first public hearing is on the budget. And just a few recap items, high-level items on the budget. These couple of slides that I'll be presenting, you'll see they have page numbers up at the top, and those page numbers are referring to pages in the proposed budget book, so if you need more detail, you can go there. So we're very proud to present a budget that advances many Curville 2050 initiatives. We have 15 of them listed here, but some of the major ones include the Legion Lift Station and the TTHM Mitigation Project that we've been talking about for a long time, as well as significant funding for streets and drainage and projects there. Looking at just a total of the budget citywide for all funds, we're looking at $78.2 million in expenditures. 78% of that is made up of the general fund, the water fund, and the capital projects funds. So that's where the majority of the spending is happening. The general fund and the water fund have balanced budgets, and they meet our reserve policy requirements. Looking at the general fund specifically, you'll see that pages 53 through 132 of the budget book talk in detail about it. But once again, we are proposing a balanced budget in the general fund of $28.8 million. You'll see that public safety and streets account for 63.3% of the expenditures. And we're projecting an unrestricted ending fund balance at 27.2%, which is above our, our policy. Looking at the water fund, so the water fund is the second-largest fund. We're proposing a balanced budget there with $13 million in revenues and expenses. You'll remember that we did a rate study in 2019 with the outside company, New Gen Strategies. They focused on looking at cost recovery and rate structure, in addition to comparing Curville to other cities. And based on their recommendations, we had some unrecovered costs, and we also had a lot of variable revenues that we were trying to match against fixed costs. So we are proposing a change to both the water and sewer rates and the structure. So the new structure, we think, will encourage conservation. It will, the new structure does not have a large impact to the lowest gallon users, and it provides us more fixed revenue that better aligns with our cost structure. The other big change in the water fund is an increase in the street use fee. So the street use fee is what the water fund pays to the general fund. So most of our water lines run underneath our streets, so when repairs have to be done, that requires cuts in the streets. We also have a lot of heavy equipment from the water fund that drives on those streets. So this street use fee helps us pay directly for street maintenance in the general fund. And we increased that street use fee from 3% of water revenues to 4% of water fund revenues. And so that gave us an extra $130,000 for street maintenance in the general fund. All right, and that's all I have for the speakers.
Hey, Ms. McElhan, do we have speakers? Okay, you're right, you're right. Yes, yes, yes. I always forget that, okay? You do not have to have signed up to speak to this issue. So if we have speakers?
She just pointed out the general fund expense budget is balanced at $28.8 million. Just 'cause I always get confused by this, the development, so I guess I gotta ask you guys, development services, is that fund on top of the $28.8 million, or is it included in it?
I'm gonna ask Jamie to answer that.
And then I had one other question, but...
Yes, thank you for your question. So you'll remember that last year, we broke development services out into its own specific fund, so we could really focus on that area. And so the development services fund has revenues, and they have expenses, and their expenses exceed their revenues that they are generating just from development fees, that kind of thing. So there's that difference there, and the, the difference there is funded by the general fund, so that difference is part of the $28.8 million, the transfer to the development services fund. That makes sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. It doesn't quite answer what I was asking. So the expenses for the city used to be all, you could, you could look at the general fund and you get total expense, okay? So what is that number now? Is 28.8 million? Plus, what's the uncovered by general fund, the stuff that they're, what's the revenue that they're bringing in on top of the 28.8?
Okay.
So what's that?
So if you look in the budget book, starting on page 133 is the development services fund. And you can see that they have expenditures of $926,000 is what we're proposing. And the portion of that that's already included in the 28.8 is $237,000. So you need to add another $688,000 to the 28.8. Well, we have, for presentation purposes, we've done everything the same way. So we've shown what it would have been like if development services was broken out in previous years. So that the presentation is, you can look at the presentation. We've already done the apples and apples. I'm sorry, what? Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion on this item? Do I? Oh. We have additional speakers?
No.
No. Mayor, there's no action on this item. It's just the public hearing. Your ordinances to adopt will come later. This is a little unusual. We don't usually do it this way, but...
But you do have to close this.
A public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so you wanna close this public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, we'll close it. All right.
Now we're moving on to...
Yeah, we, it's 6:49, we closed that public hearing, and now we go to the public hearing on property tax rate, 6:49.
Okay, moving on to the tax rate. So this is legally required that we have two separate public hearings, one on the budget and one on the tax rate. And this is the property tax rate that we're talking about, and this is the rate that's assessed per $100 of appraised value. And so you'll notice that what we're proposing is a rate reduction. Like I mentioned before, taking the rate from 55.14 cents to 54 cents. You'll notice that that reduction is all in the column labeled M and O, which that stands for maintenance and operating. So that's the amount that goes to the general fund for our operations. That rate reduction is the second in three years. Our rate has stayed the same or decreased for 11 straight years. This new 50- This new fifty-four cent rate would equal the rate that was in place in nineteen eighty. And you also notice that the debt portion of the tax rate remains unchanged at seven point three five, or seven point three five cents, so point zero seven three five. And that's the portion that goes specifically to pay off property tax-supported debt, so no change there. You'll remember that we did have an increase in appraised values this year. They increased nine point one percent. From there, though, we have to back off, like, frozen property and exemptions and caps and that kind of thing. So when we back off all of that, we still had a six point four percent increase. And so we looked at lowering the property tax rate. So we are able to lower the property tax rate because of that, that increase. And the rate is in between our effective rate of fifty-two point two two cents and our rollback rate of fifty-six point twenty cents. And that is all I have.
All right, do we have any speakers on this issue?
We don't have any signed up, sir, but it is a public hearing.
Of course.
Oh, we have a speaker.
Okay.
I just want to make a quick comment to the mayor and council that some of us were, who were serving on council when, when we voted to lower the tax rate, were severely maligned, and we were told that we were going to ruin the budget, and the city was going to fall into debt and despair. And I just want to say we didn't, and I applaud you all, and you won't either. So go on with it.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, anyone else speaking to this?
Okay, so everything Ms. Dozier said, of course, is correct and accurate and everything. But we need to keep in mind that we're just talking about the rates here. And so you guys are going to end up adopting something that actually, when you adopt it, it's going to say that you're given a tax increase, because that's what's happening here. It's actually a tax increase. So the rate's going down. The tax increase is going to be, I guess, three point four percent. So what that means is the person out on the road, and some of that because you're collecting more revenue, right? So the property values have gone up, and you're collecting more revenue. The rate went down. That's great. Some of this property value revenue is new property, which is great, but some of it's not. So let's just say what it is. It's a tax increase. And to put it in perspective, it's a change in a trend. It's a small change. But the past eleven years that she's talking about, all were tax increases except the last two. The, two years ago, we did a flat tax. We just didn't raise it. We didn't lower it. Froze it. Last year, we actually, accidentally, I think, but we, we lowered it. So we, we lowered the tax revenue. So this is actually putting us back on the other side of it, which, you know, if, if you want to talk real dollars, it's not a ton, but it is a difference in trend. And the reason I was asking the prior question is because what you really are doing is the cost of government is going up. It goes up everywhere. But the cost of government here is increasing at a rate of about five or six percent, the expense budget. And last year, it was a little bit less, but it still went up. And our revenues coming in are not actually going up. Last year, if you recall, I asked the question, is this sustainable? Because we increased our revenue bud, or, or budget by the five percent while lowering taxes. Now, how do we do that? I have no idea, to be honest with you, other than that we pulled money out of fixed assets and put it into operations, so. So just so that the public understands, that's the only reason I'm getting up here, is to clarify, it is a tax increase. It's small. You need to, you need to raise fees, but just shoot straight at us and tell us what we're doing, so that we know what's going on. Thanks.
Okay, Bruce.
Bruce Strick, six fifteen Earl Garrett Street here in Curville. You know what? There's always an icebreaker. There's always somebody that leads the way, and, and what the real, the real power, the real courage comes in being that icebreaker. But it also takes courage and fortitude and willingness to see the right path, no matter the source of that path, and to lead a community in a way that's positive and constructive and, and going toward the future. And that's what I admire so much about this council, and, and you're right. It's a, it's a small increase in total revenues. I think the revenues in my household increased a little bit more this year. Perhaps we didn't make the right choices. Perhaps we did. Life is like that, and to, to be so far below the limit that the state legislature put on cities going forward in the raising of taxes, and to look at what the city really needs to grow and be the kind of place that this council and the councils that went before you started, and to continue that, to make this the greatest place to live in the Hill Country. I, I just want to commend you all, and thank you for all the hard work. I have not been to any budget meetings this year, but I have read through a number of things, and I know how many hours and hours and hours, because I have said in those meetings before, it takes to do this and to do it well. And lastly, I would just like to thank Mark McDaniel and his staff and the finance staff for all the work that they do to make sure that we keep on a path of financial stability, because it isn't easy, and the staff does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, if we have no one else, we are out of the public hearing at six fifty-six. And go to item six A. Ms. McHannon, if you'll read that in for us.
Ordinance number twenty nineteen dash nineteen. An ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of up to ten million five hundred thousand dollars in aggregate principal amount of City of Curville taxes, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, series twenty nineteen, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad gloriae tax and a pledge of certain surplus revenues of the city's waterworks and sewer system, and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent, registrar agreement, and official statements, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto. And we do have two citizen speakers.
All right, we'll begin with Mrs. Dozier.
Okay. I'm here to introduce this ordinance that authorizes the issuance of the certificates of obligation. We've been talking about this for some time. This debt issuance, as you know, would be used for streets and drainage projects that are very much in need, and our citizen surveys have indicated that citizens are interested in having these things done as well. This would be supported by property taxes, but it does not require a property tax rate increase. As we just talked about, the debt portion of the property tax rate would remain the same at the seven point three five cents. And the ordinance that you received in your packet last week had a lot of blanks in it. And that's because we did not receive pricing on our debt until today at eleven o'clock. So at your place tonight, you'll see a red line version that does have complete numbers in it that we received this afternoon. So tonight, we have Tom Spurgeon, our bond counsel, and Ann Berger-Entricken, our financial advisor from Hilltop here. And Ann will be presenting the results of our pricing that we received today. And I did just want to remind you as well that per state law ordinances related to the issuance of debt become effective with only one reading, so that's different than other ordinances. The state law supersedes the city's charter on ordinances. All right, Ann.
Honorable mayor, council members, Mr. McDaniel. For the record, my name is Ann Berger-Entricken with Hilltop Securities. It is a pleasure to be back in Curville this evening. As Ms. Dozier said, the bids came in this afternoon, so that's why you really did not have an opportunity to get information before. But in this, that's why I handed out the presentation, and we'll go into much greater detail in just a moment. Before we begin, I thought it might be interesting for us to have a discussion on the market. What we show on this page is called the Bond Buyer's Index of Twenty Municipal Bonds. And this does not reflect the rate that the City of Curville got, but I think it's a excellent barometer as to what we're seeing in the current municipal market conditions. If you look at this chart, it goes all the way back to two thousand and nine, and it shows that our current rate is at three oh seven. What I'd like to highlight is that, again, this is a good barometer for what's going on in the market. But I think I will show you that this particular chart is a lagging indicator at this point in time. If you look back, you can see that the lowest rates on this chart were back in two thousand and sixteen. And based on what we're getting actually in the market as compared to this index, we have seen that the rates have actually now, just over the last week or two, gone below where we were in two thousand and sixteen, which means we're back at the lowest interest rates that we've had going back to the nineteen sixties from a municipal bond perspective. To show just what's happened over the course of the last year, this is the same data, but it only goes back to two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and nineteen. And what is very interesting, if we talk about what's going on in the market, if we go back to October tenth of last year, interest rates were, as you can see, much higher than they are now. And at that point in time, the Fed was saying that they had expectations that they were going to raise the Fed fund rates four times over the course of two thousand and nineteen. Well, in reality, we've seen that they, most recent action they took was to lower it. And you can see a very significant downward trend that we've seen in interest rates. On the next page, we're looking at what the yield curve is relative to a triple A, double A, single A, and a B double A. And what is very interesting that we observe, and we've seen it before from a historical perspective, that when interest rates get so low, there is significant compression along the yield curve. And so the difference in the rates that you got today from a double A are actually very, very close and similar to those that you would get from a triple A. If you look at the difference even going higher, and the difference between an A or a B double A is much compressed now as compared to where it is in a general historical market. So talking about the transaction summary, I thought it might be very helpful, before we get into the actual part of this, is to talk about the rating agency process. As part of issuing bonds for the City of Curville, we undertake multiple processes, which include the drafting of a disclosure document, working on various analysis, and sending the information to Standard and Poor's, the rating agency that rates the City of Curville. What they do is they look at the City of Curville. They're not just comparing you to other cities across the state of Texas. They're comparing you to entities all across the country. That is a very, very important standard and benchmark that they have, in particular after two thousand and eight with the market dislocation and the, the more transparency that they put into how they are actually doing their ratings. Your staff did an excellent job. The rating agencies generally send a list of questions that they would like to have answered and follow-up data. As I said, your staff did an excellent job and prepared very detailed written responses. The files that went to S and P were so large, I think it actually took Ms. Dozier about four or five different emails to get everything to them with all of the information. And, and one of the things that, if we look at the highlights that I pulled out, the rating was reaffirmed at the double A. And one of the key things that talked about was very strong management. If you go to the bullet point, Standard and Poor's has what they call FMA methodology. That's Financial Management Assessment. And what they do is, it's interesting, when, when we look at the rating, there are four components. They look at debt. They look at finances. They look at the economy, and they look at management and governance. And for a long time, we really tried to get them to tell us which one of those was the most important, the largest driver. And finally, S and P took really what I thought was a leadership role, and that they came out and they said the management and governance was the most important. And their, their rationale behind that is, is with strong management and governance, you can withstand an economic downturn. With, with strong management and governance, you can undertake a strong capital improvement program. And so they, they talked about the things that they look at. And if you, if you read what it said, I mean, the highest category that you can get on the FMA is the strong, and that's what the city has. And it talks about the financial practices that you have are strong, well embedded, and likely sustainable. And they think that that's important because they know cities evolve over time, economies, debt plans, capital improvement programs. And so they believe that your strong management is really, that was the first bullet point when we looked at the, at the report. They talked about strong budgetary performance, strong, very strong budget flexibility, very strong liquidity, adequate debt and contingent, contingent liability profile, and a strong institutional framework. They really focused on their five-year fiscal forecast. They see that as a very important tool in helping cities. And just a couple of points where they talked about your budget flexibility and your liquidity. So congratulations to the city and, and, and having your rating reaffirmed, and to the staff for all the efforts in putting their package together, their, the conference call that we had and the work that went into this. So relative to the bids, it's interesting. We made the determination to yet again undertake a competitive sale for the City of Curville. We've done that really mostly over the last couple of issues, and it's because Curville has traded so well in the market and has such interest that we've always gotten extremely good bids on your behalf. And I think that that's evidenced again as we see today. So there were five different entities that provided a bid. And what I thought was actually interesting is that UMB Bank, if you look at their bid of a two point four three, the cover bid, they were five basis points less. And in a market like we have today, that is actually very, very aggressive and very significant. If you look at the differential between the next two, it was like two point four eight, two point four nine, two point five one. So the, the next three bids were much closer. So we really believe that, that undertaking a competitive bid, again, was really in the best interest for the city to achieve the lowest cost. And the, the true interest cost is two point four four. On the right-hand side, we show the coupon and the yield structure that they provided as the bid for consideration for the city. When we go to the next page, when we go to the next page. Sorry, I apologize. It looks like a page got left out. We actually have in the printed presentation a debt service page, which includes the sources and uses. When we, when we solved again so that we would not exceed the ten million five that was authorized, and I think it's important to note that the entire authorization was able to be put into the project fund, but your par amount is only nine million eight ninety-five. The bid that we received did include a premium of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which in essence means that the premium is paying for all the costs of issuance. You get the full amount of the project fund deposit and a par amount of nine million eight hundred and ninety-five thousand. One of the key things that I wanted to highlight is that the City of Curville undertook a very similar sale at approximately the same time, back in two thousand and sixteen. And the interest rate in two thousand and sixteen was a two point four six, and the interest rate for your consideration tonight is a two point four four. So you're actually two basis points less than what looked like on the chart is the lowest interest rate for a long period of time. Basically, we recommend that the city approve the bid from the underwriter, UMB Bank. We think that it's, that it's a good structure. It provides flexibility going forward. We want to really acknowledge all of the assistance that we had from your staff on this transaction, in particular, Mr. McDaniel and Ms. Dozier. We know, especially in the midst of when they're doing their budget and the tax rate, there's an awful lot of steps that go to the process of undertaking an issuance of debt, the disclosure document. And they, and all of your staff has always been very responsible, very responsive, and helpful to us in the process. I did, they acknowledged Tom Spurgeon, bond counsel, who's here this evening. In case you have some questions relative to the legal documents, was very helpful. And finally, just want to say thank you. I think when I was here the last time, we were talking about how we've had the opportunity to work with the city since the late eighties, and I've had that opportunity and a real honor, and we very much appreciate that. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. In the handout version that you have, we do have the full rating report and the full detailed numbers in case you have any specific questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions?
This is great information and something to be celebrated, so.
Can we get some money at that rate, too?
Crazy.
While you're here, I want to ask you a question. There are folks that look at the debt the city is carrying and, and really get very scared and concerned about that. and concerned about that. Is this fairly typical for cities that you work with?
Yes, sir. I work with cities all across the state of Texas, and it, taking care of infrastructure has really become so important for communities. And while there are, while sometimes there are certain things that can be done on a pay-go basis, if you're looking at significant projects that have long-term useful lives, and this you're talking about, you know, major reconstruction, and then some of the others, we've done water and wastewater infrastructure and different things like that, which water and wastewater, water, many parts of water infrastructure has 50-year useful life, wastewater systems oftentimes have 30 to 35-year useful lives. And so thinking about it kind of from a multi-general, multi-generational perspective, if you've got assets that are going to be in place for 20, 30, 40 years, it can be extremely challenging to look to one generation, one very narrow time, to have the citizens pay for it. So this is really better trying to align that. One of the things that Ms. Dozier and I talk about on a regular basis is making sure we have an appropriate asset liability match. We want to make sure that the timeframe over which the debt is amortizing is lower and shorter than what the useful life of the project is. You want to make sure that if you are using debt, you are using it prudently and responsibly. So Mayor, we do see a number of our communities, especially in this, what is now an interest rate environment where over 99% of the time, interest rates have been higher, who are choosing to utilize this and lock this in. You still have a 10-year call option. If for some reason in 10 years, interest rates are lower than they are, you have the opportunity to refund it for savings, totally at the discretion of the city. So you've at least locked in a ceiling for what your debt service is going to be for the next 20 years, but you still preserve flexibility if the opportunity presents itself in the future to refinance the bonds.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
If you say that again, that was, you and Amy have this match. Could you say that again?
Yes, yes ma'am. Asset liability match.
Okay.
So in these projects, we wanted to make sure we understood, so what is the useful life of the projects that are being financed? And so we work to make sure that the amortization of this debt attributed to that does not exceed the useful life of those assets.
Good, good. Okay. Do you have any other questions on this item?
We have two citizen speakers. Brenda Craig.
Brenda Craig, my address is 2015 Vista Ridge. There's been much discussion in the community about asking City Council to place this matter of issuing debt on a ballot. In my opinion, the voters have already spoken. Each of you were elected by a large majority, some might even say close to a landslide. It appears to me that the voters have strong confidence in your ability to make good decisions. Council should not have to call a special election every time an important decision needs to be made. Now, do the job you were elected to do and make the decision, do you issue the debt or not. Interest rates are at a record low, and the debt can be managed without increasing ad valorem taxes, which is the funding mechanism for the proposed debt. Interest rates will not go down between now and the May election. But if they do, the city can pay off this debt and refinance at the lower rate. It's done all the time. What concerns me is the amount of money the city would lose by waiting to hold an election. Construction costs increase continuously. Some streets are in horrible condition. My pet peeve, and I hope Mr. McDaniel is listening, is Riemschel. It's a one-block street that is so bad, in my opinion, it should be closed for the public safety. Only one car at a time can drive that street. It is used by many drivers to get to the football stadium and to Holsworth Drive. Look at drainage. You have some homes in danger of flooding along Lloyd Street and between Highway 27 and Guadalupe Street every time we have a two-inch rain. Several businesses along Earl Garrett Street have been flooded. Unless you believe the city does not need or have any need for street and drainage repairs, then pass the bond issue. And let's get on with it and push stack to get going on it really quick. Thank you.
All right.
Susan Doninger, 103 Turnberry Circle. The curmudgeon is here. That was lovely, dear. And I remember reading an op-ed by Mr. Mayor Blackburn, saying that he doesn't want to be a micromanager and leaving a lot of the decisions to our Mr. Mark McDaniel. So we are trusting you that your 2050 plan, in which infrastructure is top of that, not tourism, is being taken care of. I would like to see, since you have an option of putting that $10 million or more on the voting for us to vote on, I really wish you would have done that. We didn't get to vote on tures, and that's going to have a big impact on money for this place. I really feel would like to have had an opportunity to vote on this particular loan for our city. There is an ad valorem tax, I'm not sure what that is exactly, but our water rates are going to go up. I'm so glad that our property rates have gone down, we may be able to pay for our water rates as they go up. And part of that is, I guess part of that is going to be paying for this loan, according to this, certain surplus revenue of the city's waterworks and sewer system. We're really putting a lot of trust in you, and I really wish we could vote on this and find out exactly that this money is not going to be spent on the wavy blue lines for walkability. That could be considered an infrastructure for some people. The drainage is a big problem in this community, and it's a big problem with some of our new projects. So I hope that, and I understand that in the deal, in this loan, that it is for water projects and drainage and things like that. And I am, I am, I am a curmudgeon, but I really, I pay my bills, and I am concerned our governments across, up and down the line are overspending, and if we do go into that predicted recession or something, we could be in a bad way. So I thank you, and I just really expect you to please do some of your own thinking. As Mr. McDaniel does come from a large city, was not kept there, but has come to us and has lots of good ideas. So thank you very much.
Okay, Counsel. Further word?
Yes.
I just had some comments that I wanted to reiterate, but hopefully not just reiterate. So just to go back to our bond rating, and I think it was all stated there as far as our interest rate and what we are able to do right now at historical lows. As, you know, the fact that I came into this knowing that we have a self-imposed debt limit and that we will not increase our ad valorem taxes to pay for debt is reassuring to me, and that there was a public survey done. It was done randomly, and it was done with a 4% margin of error with statisticians. I did hear someone at one point say, well, why didn't I get one? Well, based on the results and based on the presentation, a 4% margin of error with 86% saying they're in favor of drainage repairs and 93 about percent saying they're in favor of street repairs, if we do not raise the tax rate, is overwhelming to me as a council member that that is what the citizens have said and they have spoken, that these are their top priorities. When I was campaigning, this is what I heard over and over again. We've had presentations on streets and drainage. The councils before us had the foresight of creating a master streets plan, which has recently been updated. And we know that we have to do this to maintain a 70% street rating at this time. You know, a lot of the surface work has been done. We're now at the point where we have to do a lot, we have to totally rebuild some of our streets that we haven't done because we wanted to do, or the councils before, wanted to start with the smaller projects. So to me, this is a capital improvement project that I think the citizens have spoken on. Let's see. I don't know that I have anything else to say, but I'd like to thank Amy for, you know, working through this very complicated situation. She and I spoke on the debt and how complicated the timing is, and I just really appreciate her knowledge and spending that time with me, explaining all of my questions that, you know, I'm still in that learning process. But I just wanted to make my feelings about what we're doing clear. That's just my perspective, so that's where I am with the situation.
All right, okay. Any other comments?
Yes, I would like to say I'm going to vote for this. I think I agree with Kim, the city has let us know that this is something we need. Brenda mentioned one street where you can only, only one car at a time. We've got a lot of those streets with only one car at a time. It needs to be done. It's deferred maintenance, it's been there for a long, long time. The other thing I would like to say, and thank you to the staff, in Standard and Poor's, as she read to us, in their rating comments there, the word "strong" is in every line that they have. Strong management, budgetary performance, very strong budget flexibility, very strong liquidity, and strong institutional framework. And I just, that word "strong" just keeps coming out, and I think we can handle this. We can do it. And we are not going to, we're not going to be in debt, and even if there's a recession, this city is going to stand strong. And it's because of, we're undergirded by what, by what our city staff is saying we can and we can't do. So it will have my vote.
All right. Do we hear a motion on this item?
I will move.
Okay.
I would move. That we accept it.
Okay. Motion second over here. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. Let me say something to you just quickly, by Ann's comments, by our, you didn't get to say anything about bond. And then Mark and Monica with Kimley Horn, I find that the city just consistently brings strong consultants and advisors around us to make good decisions, and we appreciate you. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Okay. Now we come to a little item regarding the zoning code. Ms. McHannon, will you read that in for us?
Ordinance number 2019-17, second reading. An ordinance approving and adopting the city of Kerrville, Texas zoning code. A comprehensive rewrite of the city's zoning regulations in accordance and aligned with the Kerrville Comprehensive Plan, Kerrville 2050. Said rewrite to be known as the city of Kerrville, Texas zoning code, and found within a new chapter 60 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Approving and adopting the official zoning map of the city, providing procedures to amend said map, requiring a staff report as to implementation by a specific date, repealing in their entirety all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith, providing an open meeting clause, providing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a penalty or fine of not more than $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. We do have four citizen speakers signed.
All right. Okay, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Again, thank you for your support on this progress, on this project with the Code Review Committee, our consultants that you mentioned. This is the second reading. First reading in public hearing was August 13th. Staff and consultants have reviewed the comments from that public hearing. The draft book for you today is the same as the draft from the first reading with just a few minor edits from our legal staff. Staff will bring, excuse me. Would that introduce Mark Bowers?
Thank you, Drew. Mayor Blackburn and members of the Kerrville City Council. Again, my name is Mark Bowers. I am a planner, landscape architect with the firm Kimley Horn, and project manager for the consultant team that's leading the development of the overall zoning ordinance for Kerrville. So we have a much more brief presentation that we'll make to you this evening. We felt it was extremely important to give, provide an overview for folks that might not have been here at the last meeting or heard about the process that we went through. So tonight, we'll go through an overview of the process and approach, project goals and responses, draft zoning maps, and then turn it back for any discussion. So from the standpoint of the overview of process and approach, essentially, this started with a, back in, I guess it was October of last year, with a diagnostic meeting with city staff. What we did is we sat down with staff that was utilizing the ordinance on a day-to-day basis to identify those things that were working very well, and those things that not only staff, but also things that they were hearing from the development community might have been issues that they were dealing with that needed to be fixed within the overall ordinances. We had periodic project coordination calls throughout the process with staff, just from a management standpoint, to make sure we were hitting targets, but also to get into some of the detail related to the ordinance and discuss opportunities and options for how the ordinance might move forward, but most importantly, how we would tee up information so that it was understandable with the community and for the Code Review Committee. Stakeholder interviews took place on October 15th through 17th in 2018. Over that three-day period, we had multiple back-to-back sessions with stakeholders, individual stakeholders, as small groups, again, talking to people from the business community, folks that are developers in your community, architects, engineers, anybody who might be interfacing with the code, to understand what are the concerns with the existing code, as well as what are the things we should be looking for to identify goals for the future code so that we can start to check those off to see if we started to hit the target. Joint P&amp;Z, I'm sorry, six meetings with the Citizen Review Committee, November 2018 through June 2019 on this particular code. The joint P&amp;Z City Council Work Session on March 19th, where we teed up options for how we might move forward with specific aspects of the code, and got feedback from many of you, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. Community Open House on May 16th to get the overall citizens' input into the direction we were going with the code. And then ultimately, Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearings on June 20th and July 18th. And then, as Drew mentioned, the City Council Public Hearing on August 13th. So just some of the highlights of what we heard from the stakeholders through that interview process and throughout the process of working with the community in some of the public meetings. The code is difficult to navigate and requires too much interpretation. We talked quite a bit about when it's taking too much interpretation, sometimes that can be a detriment to the development in your community in that people feel like there's not a predictability of whether their project will be passed or not, if there's a whole lot of interpretation by individuals that has to be made. Users are not confident in the process. Economic development requires a predictable and regulatory environment, or predictable regulatory environment. Too many districts, and maybe the district's names are based on geography rather than use, and too many uses require a CUP, and the process is often difficult. So that's a highlight of some of the key things that we heard. Monica Hyde, who's with Prolog Planning, will come up, and she'll talk through some of the ways that we've addressed those things through the project's goals and how we've responded to them.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, as well as staff and those that are here interested in this particular project. And before we move on, I would like to say thank you to all of you, your community, your professional staff, for the many, many, many hours and the high level of interest you've had in this project. It's allowed us to come to you tonight and deliver the ordinance that you have in front of you. As Mark said, we are doing an abbreviated presentation this evening. Hopefully, that's not too much of a disappointment. We do have
We do have, on your city website, under the council tab, council meeting documents, you will see the full presentation that we delivered two weeks ago, in case anybody has a particular interest in seeing more detailed information. The stakeholder interviews that Mark just ran through with you, the highlights, allowed us to come up with three kind of overriding goals that we wanted to work through in this particular process, creating a user-friendly ordinance, minimizing nonconformities resulting from a new code and zoning map, and supporting the Kerrville 2050 vision. We know how committed all of you are to that, and the community appears to be as well. So I just wanted to point out to you how we addressed those three overriding goals and some subgoals underneath each one of those. Under the heading of creating a user-friendly ordinance, we saw a need to simplify, streamline, and clarify the code. And as you're very aware, we reduced the number of zoning districts, which was kind of a big issue to everybody, by 65%, cutting from 49 different districts to 17. We standardized the format for zoning district regulations to make the code easier to work with. Also, a need to revise out-of-date standards and uses. We added new uses and expanded the land use table considerably. We reduced the number of uses requiring a CUP, eliminated the special use district, and we are now basing setback and height on the zoning district rather than on the use that's taking place on a piece of property. The use can change over time. The zoning district is more stable. We updated some standards, for example, for parking and drive-through facilities. Also, under the heading of creating a user-friendly ordinance, we wanted to help address some inconsistencies and minimize the need for interpretation that Mark just mentioned a second ago. In order to do that, we expanded the definitions section so that now all of the basic terms are defined and all of the individual uses are defined. And I apologize, there's a couple of redundant words in this slide and the next one, but I think we can get through. We added requirements we're missing. Another large goal was to minimize nonconforming, nonconformities resulting from a new code and zoning map. And there, we, for residential, commercial, industrial, and airport districts, we used the existing setbacks and height regulations as much as possible, but in many cases, we were able to reduce or relax those slightly in an effort to avoid creating nonconformities. Site and rear yard setback requirements were eliminated, except in the case of single-family residential zoning adjacent to non-residential zoning. We strengthened the grandfathering provisions for nonconforming uses in buildings and even allow the reconstruction of properties or re-institution of uses if they are destroyed up to 100% by natural causes, which is quite a bit of flexibility for a property owner. And then overall, we reduced the nonconforming properties by about 75% from the previous map, excluding the CBD and DAC, which is downtown arts and culture district parcels. Those were not, those were simply not a part of the analysis that we conducted. Then, in support of the Kerrville 2050 vision, we created a new mixed-use district that allows for some development in certain catalyst areas. We revised the standards for the downtown arts and culture district to emphasize arts and culture. We developed additional residential options and modified existing regulations because we all are aware of your concern with the lack of affordable housing in your community, so we're trying to offer some options there. We added separation requirements for uses involving motor vehicles and motor vehicle fuels to protect Nimitz Lake as your water source. And then, as part of the next phase of the project, as we've mentioned to you, we'll be looking at some overlay guidelines for downtown and the river core. And then Drew wants to talk to you about another set of regulations that acknowledge the fact that the zoning changes and the code changes quite significantly.
Thank you, Monica. Part of the ordinance adopting the zoning code, staff has set out a six-month timeline to bring back any changes to the code, the land use table, or possibly map changes, back to council within that timeframe. And during that timeframe, staff will just talk with property owners about specific examples where we've either missed the mark in the configuration, or configuration of the current zoning as how it was previously zoned, or consistency with the comprehensive plan, and bring those forward as zone cases as well. And again, any of those uses that are not included would have the option of coming forward with a conditional use permit if it's not a text amendment or a code amendment that we're bringing forward.
So finally, to build on the point that Drew just may, or made, we have our proposed zoning map and as well as the downtown core map, which is a part of the overall exhibits. Again, to reiterate what Monica told you early on, essentially, we really changed up the ordinance to make it more user-friendly, and that certainly had some implications on the map. Again, we went from 49 to 17 districts. So through that process, in some cases, it was very easy to look apples to apples to make transitions into zoning, and in other cases, we actually had some apples and oranges. And so because of that, we went through many iterations of this map to make changes, starting way back when we had the public meeting back in May. People started marking up some things that they didn't think were quite right, and we would take a look at it and say, yeah, we need to make some tweaks to the map based on that. We continued to make those tweaks throughout the P and Z public hearings and made refinements even to the approach that we made of transitioning from the old map to the new map. So throughout this process, we've talked about minimizing nonconformities. And we have significantly, since that first map was released to today, reduced the number of nonconformities, new nonconformities moving forward in the city. So to Drew's point, it's not perfect, but it's certainly going to work for you a whole lot better than what you've had in the past. And when we work with communities, we stress that it's not uncommon for there to be things that still shake out in the wash as you move forward several months beyond the adoption of an ordinance like this. And there needs to be some flexibility to work with property owners to correct those types of things. That's not something that's unusual with communities moving forward with their zoning. So that's really the complete presentation that we had for you, a summary presentation based upon what we shared with you and the community in our last meeting, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you, Mark. I tell you, with a project this big, and I've seen how many changes have been made along the way, as citizens have talked about, you know, a need for change, that kind of thing. But it is really significant to come out with something this comprehensive and the ability, if there still need to be some changes, to come back for the citizens to make application at no cost in the next six months. So, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Ms. McHannon?
Bonnie White. Bonnie White, 402 Forest Ridge. Martin, you got my picture? Thank you. I want to just read this first, and then I'll show you the property that I'd like to speak to you about. And thank you, Mark. I appreciate you and Monica's work, and we started out working with you, and appreciate that we're trying to make it easier. That's one of the things we did always face in working with developers. And Walt and Gil will be happy that you've made it easier for developers to come in and do what they need to do. But I'm going to do something and ask you something very simple this evening, and I'm going to ask you to consider it if you want to get your pens and write it on your tablets there for possible consideration. I want to first apologize, I didn't make any of those hearings that Mark mentioned or Drew today, because I assume that the property that my husband and I own, that I'm going to speak to you about, was not changed. My fault. I have no reason, I have no, I just asked for your apologies on that, but it's my fault for not checking that more thoroughly. It's just a small pocket of land, and so I assumed from the beginning of this that it was unchanged. It has just been brought to our attention, as a matter of fact, that the zoning ordinance sits on the agenda, contains a change to the zoning code that directly affects a property belonging to a company owned by my husband and myself. The subject property is located at 3412 Loop 534, and I sent all of you an email with this information on it. It is comprised of six and a half unimproved acres with no city utilities. It abuts a 17 and a half acre similarly unimproved parcel of land, both beside and behind, some of which lies in a flood zone, if I am not mistaken. These two parcels are located in front of the city landfill, just for your reference. Ours and the neighbors' 17 and a half acres I'm speaking to you about are surrounded by zoning codes in this new map as agricultural, general, commercial, public, and institutional, a small portion of which is not in the city limits. Across a flood zone, there are some homes on a one-way street, or a dead-end street, I should say, that are across a gully, a flood area, and screened by natural vegetation. This property's never had city utilities. It's currently zoned as the old zoning, E27, which is commercial. Your new designation, the closest to, would be C3. And although there have never been any improvements on this particular property or the 17 and a half acres beside us and behind us, we have paid taxes on this property as commercial property for about 15, 16 years. Again, we were not aware that the subject property is now being proposed as C2 or light commercial, which, in a look at your new code, drastically reduces the allowed uses for our particular property, reduces or changes about 33 times what we could have done under the next closest designation, which is what we're asking you for, and that's C3. That's what we're going to ask you to amend this, this evening. I know it's second reading. I know that is taboo, but I know it's possible. So I'm going to ask for that simple request. If you can see it right there with this pointer, is, there's a little kind of melan-colored property. It's kind of spot-zoned, and I did speak with, let me put it back on there again. There. This is all, this is landfill, institutional. There's general, commercial on this side. And in speaking with Drew, I did call him this afternoon, and he graciously spoke with me as he was trying to prepare for this meeting, and, which is also taboo, but he was very helpful. And I believe that he said, in trying to determine this property as C2, the next closest thing is C3, which is what we're asking. It's not a drastic change, but it would help us in the marketing of that project, and I think is reasonable in light of what we have behind us and beside us. If you'd grant me another half a minute, Mayor, thank you. So Drew suggested that this change, and correct me if I'm wrong, Drew, was actually made by the consultants? That's okay. I love you anyway. In a general way, and not by any of our committees, and that's the point that I'm trying to make. So it's a big area to cover. We understand that. I'm not certain, and maybe they could shed light on the reasoning behind it. To me, it's reasonable, and again, it's very little change. I think Drew also said this afternoon, the closest to E27, that's that apples and oranges thing he's talking about, would be C3 and not C2. So that is my request. And if you'd make that note, if you do make, vote on this again, if you would do it with that amendment, I would greatly appreciate it, and I think it's a reasonable request. Did you have any corrections to what I accused you of? Do you, Mark?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, though. Could you be more specific as to why you wanted E3 versus E2, I mean, C3 versus?
C3, yes. It is the use is delineating, and that is, pardon?
Specific uses.
Specific, I don't have specific, anything specific in mind. We don't have a use, intended use from our part. Or do we have a developer who has an intended use? There was at one time a look by the tech stock, and they were looking at maybe combining that and putting their facility there. And in light of the fact that the police station, you know, they were, we were looking at, and y'all may look at this, putting it out there. One of the restrictions, for example, is no car, no car lot. And, but yet, if you had a police station there, you would have a lot of cars right across the street. So it's little things like that. There were 33 either denials or denial of conditional use.
I think your letter referred to C2. That's why I did research on C2 versus C3. That's why I was asking the question, why you.
Yeah. That's the difference in C2 and C3. There's just more, a little, a few more uses allowed, a little more flexibility, if you will, under C3. So that's, that's why our request.
All right. Ms. McHannon, another speaker?
Drew, Rock Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Drew Ravel with the Drenner Group, here on behalf of O'Reilly Auto Parts. Our client's property is located at 1327 Junction Highway. I'm here to discuss a recent addition to Article 9, Section 60-60, that has very large impact on their site. This addition came before the first reading of city council. We've been following this for quite a while in our discussions with staff. Under the future zoning, the property would be C2, light commercial. And then after the first draft that came before you at August 13th meeting, the addition of a provision that coupled automobile parts with automobile repairs, both major and minor, prohibits the use on the site so that it is no longer able to be developed for an auto parts store. And so we come before you tonight to ask you to consider permitting the use under C12 or continuing the use under a CUP as it is permitted today with its current zoning. And with that request, we're looking for a formalized situation in a six-month period if we could have that commitment, that in the situation where we currently have this entitlement and it is now being removed and prohibited, a pathway forward is what we're looking for, so that the site that it is today can continue to be looked at to be developed with this intended use of an auto parts store.
Hey Drew, I've passed it lots of times. Where on Junction Highway is O'Reilly's?
On, there's not currently an O'Reilly's auto parts store. This is a site that they're looking at developing their second location. It's on the west side of town, just across from like CC's Pizza, McDonald's, there's a Discount Tire and a Walmart.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Got you, got you. Are you already doing site work?
No, we are not. We have been here before, as mentioned in the previous presentation by the consultants. The site was, I think, allowed under Retail Trade Limited, and within that, I think it fell in Retail Trade 1. And so we had been instructed by staff at the time to come through in the conditional use process, and that was not successful. And so we waited a year, and the year came up, I believe, at the end of 2018, to come before you again. And then with the onset of this code rewrite, we've kind of been watching this, and it's been in our communications over April, May, that with the C2 zoning, this automobile parts, because it is now defined in your new code, thank you to your, you know, greater definition, number of definitions, that this would be allowed under C2. And it was, again, at this last reading that we saw on the backup, and we were unable to make it to attend that meeting, that this provision kind of coupled it with automobile repair services, both major and minor. And in reading through that provision in Article 9, it, the uses are not really comparable. Automobile repair, major and minor, talk about maintenance bays, stalls, services on vehicles, they're coming into the facility. And automobile parts is defined as just a retail store that you're able to come and purchase parts and, and then leave.
To be clear, your proposed zoning is, is what?
Under new code, it would be C2.
And you're asking for C3?
No, we're not asking for any zoning change. It is currently allowed with a CUP under existing zoning as it is today. And with this change, it will prohibit the ability to utilize it for, under the current zoning. So it takes that use away.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you. Okay. Do we have another speaker?
Stephen King.
Okay.
Stephen King, 242 Creekwood. Mayor, council staff. I was before you at the first reading about this piece of property on that G Street South. We own, there's approximately 40 properties, pieces of property on that G Street South, all the way up to 16. Of that, I think there's around 14 businesses there. We have four properties that we purchased, but they're large properties, so we probably, we're probably 20% of that street right now. We also own 12 acres along the River Trail, which is our, in a G12 company we own called G12. And then we have, this is also under G12, and And then we have, this is also under G twelve, and another company, eight ninety LLC. Of that fourteen properties on that street, only, I can only find three of them as being, as being conforming. One of them is a beauty shop, which is closed and out of business. And the other one is a laundromat, and I found, oh, and there's a strip center, a small strip center that has a lot of vacant space available for renting with a sign out front that says, please rent. So I've talked to Drew about this, and, and Mark has also received an email on this property. We were concerned that we've been, we've been put into MU, which, the multi-use, where we were under S thirty-three, which is very similar to C two. Under, under MU, we, there's no way we can, well, our biggest, our biggest fear is that one of the properties we purchased, we only purchased these properties in January, July first. So that's the issue we have. We were not available for, I mean, all of our other properties we own in town, we had looked at. And we have quite a few properties on Water Street and Broadway, and they were all fine. We were fine with the MU designation. But we purchased this property July first, and from an out-of-town owner. And we're concerned that, on one of the properties, one of the properties is Cowboy Communications. They, they have their yard there, and they provide service to Hill Country Telephone, Windstream, and all the telephone companies in town. They do all the service for them. So we have them as a renter. There's a possibility that we may try to negotiate them away, some of our property back. It's a large piece of property, over two acres. And maybe rent that to another company to use as a yard or something like that, to try to maximize our revenue. I mean, we paid a significant amount of money for this property without knowing that it was going to be zoned into something that we, we cannot get there. I mean, MU is basically a restaurant, a bank, an antique store, a liquor store, a bookstore, a department store, a drugstore, a multifamily housing, indoor flea market, a grocery store, funeral home, a hotel, short-term rental, camera store, a movie theater. I don't see us putting any of those there. We have enough of a lot of those already, especially banks. So what we're, our concern is, we're, especially on the second property, it's three separate lots. We have a garage there, and a mechanic shop there, and then we have three bays. And Drew has told us we can enclose the bays to offer possibly storage for some of these small contractors in town who need a place to put stuff, you know, to run their business, like insulation companies and stuff like that. However, the, we have three entrances to that property, three separate entrances to that property. We'd like to use the third entrance as, rent it out, it's probably a half acre, and rent it out to another contractor, put a small building there, or build him a small building, and let him also occupy that. It's right next to the storage units on G Street. But by doing that, we're going to have to get a conditional use. It's non-conformal. We have to get a go, go for you guys and get a, get a variance because we're adding to the property. So I just, I know that this can be addressed in the next six months. I'm not asking to do anything about it tonight. I just want it on the public record that we have, we have an issue with this, as do probably the other forty property owners on this property. This is nothing like G Street North, across the river, which we own property on G Street North, all, all up and down there. But this is on the part that's going the other direction, and it's significantly different. And it will be developed in the future. I mean, I think ten years, fifteen years from now, it'll be great, down the road. But we didn't buy this for ten years or fifteen years. We bought this to try to make income off of it and survive the next ten years.
Hey Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm confused. I see G Street going from Medina Highway to Schrader, I mean, to, yeah, Broadway over there. So you're, are you talking about that area?
Yeah, that area right there, yeah. The part that we don't have any water or sewer.
Yeah.
We do, we do have electricity from Cape Cod, and we do get a tax bill once a year from the city. But, yeah, that's the property, and it's significantly different. And Gary knows, the other side on the River Trail, the River, I mean, on the cottage side over there, it's significantly different. And we do own properties on the Broadway side, or the Water Street side. We own properties over there. We don't have a problem with MU. I'm just saying, on that side, where you go up the hill towards the new Texas Hill Country Bank, it's significantly different. That is all industrial. It's all light and, it's, it's C two, is what it is. And so I'm just, I want it brought up in, on the record that we are probably, we're going to have to come before you guys to try to do something on that property. And I know it's probably late to do it now, but we would like to have consideration in the future because it is, it's put us in a, in a very bad position, and it's put everyone else. Avery, Avery has a machine shop on that street. I don't think he wants to turn it into an apartment complex. I haven't talked to Chris, but I doubt it. And, I mean, so there's a lot of very strange uses on that property, a car dealership. Okay?
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Duly noted.
Okay. We have one more speaker?
Pablo Brickman.
Good evening. Pablo Brickman, thirty-nine, twenty-eight Oak Park Drive. We have several clients that have come before us, and some of which have spoken tonight. Our, we, we met with staff, met with Drew yesterday, had a great meeting with him. I think it's going to be, there's going to be more opportunity to come before you, become before staff, and, and talk to specific things, similar to what Steve said. Drew is very receptive to understanding. You had mentioned that the consultant, that's not perfect, and we, we understand that. We're encouraged by Drew's reaction, by the rest of staff, that it, there's going to be things that's going to come up. And what we're going to try to do is pull them together so that we're not coming before, you know, Drew, I need a meeting, I need a meeting, things like that. So there's, there's some things that, that came up that we looked at yesterday that may have been missed by the consultants. That just didn't make sense, maybe small things that some other clients have brought through and that we've looked at. But we just wanted to tell you that, that positive on the meeting, positive of the reception to, we understand, Pablo, that this is going to come up. And we're going to try to make it easy and, and come before staff. And if things need to be requested to be changed, or to just have a look, or even more understanding, we just, we, we're looking forward to the response.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks. Let me, let me say, you know, I'm not speaking for council. I'm, I'm speaking for myself on this. My feeling is, when you look at the, what's been brought before us tonight by Bonnie and Drew and Steve and Pablo, those are all pieces of a big issue related to zoning, and it is a system. And what you do over here impacts what you're doing over here. It, it would be my feeling that rather than take action tonight, we encourage folks to visit with Drew and the development staff and come to some kind of resolution. And as has been said already tonight about time with Drew, I, I think it would be positive and receptive. Because otherwise, I feel like we're, we're working piecemeal on this. What, what do you think?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have to agree with you. It's been a long, drawn-out process. I think staff and Drew particularly deserves tons and tons of credit. I personally have had people come to me in the last six weeks with situations, and I've returned them to Drew, and he's been more than accommodating and working through these issues. I think at this point in time, it's time for us to move forward, to pass the ordinance as presented. And there's, if there, then there's going to be issues with Mr. King and Ms. White and these other things. But we've, we've made allowance, and we've instructed staff pretty firmly, we want these issues resolved. We, you know, there's a process for doing that. We waive the fees. So I, I, I just can't get enough credit to staff and the work that's gone into this, and the consultants.
All right. Okay.
I, I'm, I'm struggling with this because I guess I want to weigh whether waiting is just going to continue to bring forward these specific issues until at some point we have to make a decision to pass, and, and to pass it knowing that we're still going to have a six-month period where our staff is basically giving or using their time to do a service that's usually, a service that's an expense to people that live in the city to make it right if it needs to be changed. So I can say for sure, although I would really want to be able to do that tonight, I don't feel like I'm, I'm able to make that decision. I don't want to make it just on the spot. The first time I had the chance to look at it was sitting here at council tonight. And as a person, I mean, personally, from what you've said, I, it makes sense. But then if we approve this, and, and, you know, and then we look at something different, and we go down the line tonight, I, I don't know if I'd feel confident in making all of those decisions tonight. Because some of them are complicated. Some of them involve definitions. Some of them haven't been specifically defined as to the properties. So I can see what, what you're saying about, about waiting. And, but I can also see if we don't pass it right now, then we're kind of kicking the can on, on this issue. So, anyway, that's, that's how I feel.
I think that I will, would vote to, to pass this tonight, but with very specific instructions to staff, to be flexible, to listen to all of these, which I think they will do. There's going to be more of these. These are not going to be the only ones that are going to come up, and we know that. And we just need to ask Drew for patience and understanding, and, and his ability to work with people, and I think he will do that. So we, we've got to make a decision sometime. I mean, we could, we could wait for another year before we made any decision. So I think we have no choice but to, to pass it, and you guys then work with everybody after that.
Can, can I just ask for everyone in this room that's made either a direct or indirect request or expressed concern? I'm putting you on the spot, but can you briefly go through what kind of process and what kind of expedited process, and what the expectation is for how long it will take to go through this process and through P and Z, and, and how it will be determined, or if it's determined by staff? Just can you?
If it involves a zoning change to a property, since it would be individual property, we would have to give notice, go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then come to City Council. So that process alone is about a three-month process. As Pablo mentioned, we'd like to batch groups of those, so we can give one collective presentation. Depending upon how many properties we have come forward, mitigate that as best we can. If it's a code change to the actual text of the code, it'd be a similar timeframe, because it would still have to go public notices to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then on to City Council. So that six-month window from October first being the effective date moving forward, gives us that time to do that more than once, and look at several batches if necessary, and bring those forward.
But these four requests tonight, no, they're not the only ones, but these four, timeline, you're looking at three months?
Correct.
Okay.
We can start working on those, bringing those to Planning Commission in October, November, and get those started.
Okay. All right.
I just want to also add the same thing. I, you know, we had Rachel Fitch also had a situation. I know John Miller's had some meetings with you. I know there's been many people who, and there will be more, but I was encouraged because they felt confident. And, and after your meetings, just like Pablo mentioned, there was a positive meeting, and I, I anticipate that's the way they will be. And if we can batch some of those that have already come to you, even separate from the council meetings, so that we don't, we don't miss anyone. And I, and I, I do have an optimistic opinion about how we're going to handle these requests, because we, we are going to keep an open mind, and we just need, we need to hear from you. And, you know, as, as soon as you can, and we'll, we'll try to keep the time clock from running out.
Without being, with, y'all, I would like some input from council. I'm sorry, I'm just to come back. Do you see any of the requests that were made being something that would, would be, any comfortable making any decisions on to tonight, or do we feel like all of them need to be gone?
I want to put them back in the process. I'd probably leave it to staff.
Yes. I think if we're trying to make decisions tonight, it's not the right thing.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the zoning code?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pass, and it's number twenty-nine dash seventeen on the second reading.
All right.
I second.
Okay. We got a motion, second. And I understand some of the voting may be hesitant, but, but anyway. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it is passed unanimously. Okay. And again, let me say this to those of you that have asked for a change. I promise you that Mark McDaniel and the staff and the development services and the council really are being business-friendly. And wanting to, to help move things along in regard to business, business, community and business individually. So I would just make that as a, as a comment, and...
And thank you to the Code Review Committee that spent hours and hours coming to meetings and reporting, and thank you for your volunteerism.
And planning and zoning?
Right. Yeah. Now, I have, before we move to the next item, yeah. Before we move to the next item, I have one important question. Drew, has Texas Tech played yet? This weekend? Who are they playing? What? Montana State. Okay, okay.
Piece of cake, right?
Okay. You will read the next item in, Ms. McHannon? All right. Ms. Dozier?
Hello. All right. I'd like to give you a brief update on our finances as of the end of July. And we're going to start with looking at the general fund. So year-to-date, through the end of July, the general fund has received revenues of twenty-four point two million compared to expenses of twenty-two point six million. That's to be expected, since we receive most of our property tax revenue already. Looking at revenues in general, property tax is trending very close to budget. Sales tax continues to see strong performance year-to-date. We're up four point eight percent over the prior year, and we're two point six percent better than budget. And we continue to see increases in retail, food services, manufacturing and construction, which are all important sectors of our sales tax revenue. Other revenues, a little bit lower than budget. We have slightly lower-than-budget EMS billing revenues, and then our municipal court revenue is coming in lower than budget this year. On the expenditure side, we're also lower than budget, and that's primarily related to street maintenance spending that we were thinking would have hit a little earlier in the year, but it's going to hit more towards the end of the year. On the water fund, so year-to-date, through the end of July, we've received revenues of nine point two million compared to expenditures of ten million. Looking at the revenues, it continues to be the same story, but with a little bit of an uptick, so it's good. So our water and our reuse sales are lower than budget due to the record rainfall. We still are down on consumption nineteen percent this year compared to last year, although I understand some members of council are trying to turn the tide.
I'm doing my part. Sprinklers are going when necessary. On grass, not concrete.
On the, on the positive side, this, you're not saying this yet, but in August, our revenue definitely has picked up. We are seeing increases. And you'll remember that, you know, we're billing for actual consumption, so it's a month behind. So in August, we're billing for July consumption. Looking at the actual data, like coming from the water treatment plant, July ninth is kind of when demand really started increasing. So I guess that's when everyone's yard got a little too dry. So, yeah. So for the month of August, we're continuing to, we're, we're seeing good water revenues and better sewer revenues as well, up about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand from July. So that's good. Still not as good as it was last year, but, anyway, but we're happy to see increased revenues in August that you'll see next month. Even so, though, we are expecting to end the year below budget for sure on those revenues. On the expenditure side, we are also better than budget there, so, or below budget, so that's a good thing on the expenditure side. We haven't spent as much on chemicals or maintenance, and we've also had some staffing vacancies. Looking at our other funds, the Development Services Fund, year-to-date, through the end of July, they've received revenues of one million compared to expenditures of one million, so tracking closer to budgets there. Looking at the golf fund, year-to-date, revenues of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand compared to expenditures of seven seventy-five. They've also been impacting... seventy-five. They've also been impacted by the weather this year. The green fees in July were up just a little bit, like a thousand dollars compared to the prior year. But in August, we're seeing some better, some better green fees in August. So that'll be picking up a little bit next month.
Wow, impressed. Under debris weather.
And then, oops, let's see, I missed the hotel occupancy tax. Hotel occupancy tax fund, it looked pretty good there. So through the end of July, revenues of one point two million, compared to expenditures of nine hundred and sixty-six thousand. We just continue to see strong revenues coming from multiple properties. And we do also have that one audit payment in the revenues that's helping. But, but even just our regular monthly revenue, we're seeing, seeing good increases at multiple properties. And then our real estate update, so Mr. Strachey is helping us compile this each month. And a few things to note, we continue to see, this is year-to-date, but we continue to see, you know, the home selling in that one hundred to three hundred thousand dollar range is, you know, where most of them are. Looking at just the month of July, which this is mostly year-to-date information here on the chart and the table, but just the month of July itself, we saw an increase in the number of homes sold, but a decrease in the price and an increase in days on the market. So I don't know if, maybe there's a little bit of equilibrium starting to happen, where some of the prices are coming down a little bit, but we're starting to see some movement. So, and we have a lot of real estate professionals that can probably comment as well. But, but that's our real estate update for the month. Are there any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
I had mentioned them earlier, Mark, but the next time Monica and Mark are here, can we do honorary citizen, the Curville citation or something? They've been over here so much.
I'm sure we could, especially maybe when we, or you all adopt the Doyle Area Community Development Plan.
Oh, there you go. Okay, okay, all right.
Maybe we can take you to play golf or dinner or something, support our locals.
City Council, do we have any items for future agendas? Okay, City Council, would you like to stay further tonight for an executive session? All right, we are adjourned.